Twenty-eighth, the meeting to order, can we roll call please?
Chair Quilty.
Here.
Vice Chair Hasty.
Here.
Commissioner Grego.
Here.
Commissioner Heikman.
Here.
And Commissioner Lozier.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, seeing, uh, first we'll start with the presentation of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems.
Okay, so thank you Chair Quilty and members of our planning commission. I am going to do a presentation for what was just described as the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, otherwise known as our NPDS in the city. And just as a overview, um, NPDS, it's a permit program established under the Clean Water Act and it's administered by the US Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, uh, for agencies throughout California to practice and make sure that we are doing everything in our power to provide education, outreach, and enforcement of proper discharge into a water system. So I'll go ahead and start off with the next slide. And in summary, it's going to be, some of the highlights are going to be centered around the preservation of rivers, creeks, beaches, and oceans through this process, ensuring that activities do not result into the storm drain, um, pollution, or contribute to more pollution. And just the eighty percent of ocean pollution is from land runoff. Anything that comes from the streets, roads that drains into, through the storm drain unfortunately does lead to the beaches. So therefore, the city does a very nice job of making sure that we do everything in our infrastructure in our power through our programs to reduce as much elimination as possible. And then ultimately just complying with our local regulations and codes on that. So again, what is storm water pollution? And it's really just simple. It's anything that goes into the storm drain system. And as you can see on some of the graphics and visuals, you may see these at time to time. Um, and unfortunately, most times we just assume that it's okay. Um, you know, if it's someone that has a pool and they're draining their pool, but it's highly chlorinated, that's considered an NPDS violation. If there's construction, um, road construction and there's not a proper best management practice of how to collect some of the debris and loose material, that can be a, a problem. And then I'll also dispel some of the myths or some of the perceived issues of what might be considered NPDS violation. It may not. So I'll go ahead and go into that. But, um, the next graphic is one that also helps identify the difference between sewer versus storm drain. As you can see in a household, obviously there's going to be certain situations where, um, you utilize some of the utilities and that will go through the sewer pipe, whereas other things will go into the ocean. Um, anything that goes through the sewer pipe has its infrastructure and innately will clean out that system. But down the drain into the storm drain is much different. So we have to make sure that we provide education on that end. So some of the basics, um, that you can practice at home, that you can practice as a business, is just making sure that your trash can, your lids are not overflowing with trash, especially during rainy season. Those tend to overflow and then therefore those tend to spill into the, into the curb and into the gutter and down the drain. Um, so making sure that you have receptacle lids, um, that one are closed. And if they're not operable, we have a pretty good relationship with our trash hauler that will replace those as needed. And so if there's ever a situation where your own trash lids are in due of replacement, uh, we encourage you to contact UWS or otherwise you can contact the city and we'll connect you right away. Picking up litter throughout your neighborhood, uh, again, um, you know, I see a lot of these little signs that residents will put on their lawn that pick up after yourself or at the parks, we provide those little bags, uh, doggy bags. Uh, maybe not as prevalent on the parks as it would be on like a parkway or on a street. Um, but still, it's good practice to ensure that we're doing everything we can. But limiting the amounts of pesticides and fertilizers that even us as a city that we use, will ensure good practice there, collecting trimmings, especially again along the parkways, medians, um, even in front of residential streets. Uh, we as a city will make sure that our landscaping crew and our public works team does their best to mitigate that. Uh, but if you happen to see that, please just verbalize that. If it's your own landscaper at home, making sure that they're doing everything they can to minimize the amount of debris there. And of course, never allowing, like what I mentioned earlier, never allowing, uh, loose debris or construction material like dirt, concrete, other solvents that might go into the gutter. And sweeping that up is important. So additional basics is again picking up after your pets. We talked about the pool. Um, and I'll go over it in a little bit, but basically anything that's highly chlorinated or has algae material should not be drained into the street. Um, if you have those summer, hot summer days where the chlorine levels start to, you know, reduce or dissipate, um, there are instances where you can technically drain a pool if it's not as highly chlorinated. But as just standard practice, it's better not to do it directly into the drain. Of course, the obvious ones can be automotive leaks. Paint material should never be poured down the drain. Disposing of household materials, um, any products that contain corrosive, toxic, ignitable, or reactive ingredients is considered a household hazardous waste. We as a city encourage proper disposal and we have contacts on our city website. It's listed there as the Anaheim location. There's also Huntington Beach, Irvine, and San Juan Capitano. But those are prime locations where folks can take their HHW materials directly. Unfortunately, we don't have, um, direct service through UWS that will collect it for you, but they can assist in that process, whether it's education or referring you to the right place, or even as a city. Um, you know, in certain instances, we might even be able to collect some of those items for you and dispose a bit properly, such as batteries. But ultimately, it is on the residents to ensure that they have this information handy. So illicit discharge is defined as anything that's, uh, going to go into the storm drain, discharging gutter conveyance into the storm drain system. And there are exceptions as I mentioned earlier. So these are some of the conditional, uh, exceptions that, again, when we think of it, it's like, oh, this might be a problem. But in this case, it's not air conditioning condensate, especially the ones that are outside, kind of like a window or outside a building, um, in heavy amounts. It might be a problem, but in, as a general rule, it's not. Um, irrigation water, not a problem. The one that always gets people is non-commercial vehicle washing. So if you happen to do that in your front lawn, it's always encouraged that if you're going to wash your car, probably better practice to do it on the grass because that naturally acts as a spurs, spur system. But otherwise, um, we wouldn't really worry about that too much. Uh, here in the city, we have our own contractor that does our car washing for us, but they have to provide a pad and they have to suck the water properly and then the drains cleans it in a way that prevents any issues such as discharge into the storm drain. But as I mentioned, dechlorinated swimming pool discharges, clean wastewater, filter backwash shall not be discharged into the storm drain system. But if it's dechlorinated, as a general rule, you're okay. Rising groundwater is natural springs and emergency fire, uh, biting flows are all considered exemptions that are okay. Conditionally allowed discharge if it's dechlorinated, free of algae, or free from any odors. Um, that's just reiterating that pools as a general rule, these are the ways that you can go around it. Mobile operations, uh, include mobile tea towels, mobile carpets, cleaners, uh, mobile cleaners and dog grooming. Must contain all wastewater or discharge into a sanitary sewer. There's different methods. Like I said, the pads where they have these like little vacuum suction things that assist with putting it into a container.
So even, because there, we have a couple neighbors who have people come every week to do their cars and they're not collecting water. They're supposed to have, because at my office, they do that when they, if they come wash cars.
If they're not doing that, that's a red flag.
Okay.
You know, you could always contact, um, our neighborhood preservation team or public works and they can educate them.
Okay.
Our neighborhood preservation team would be able to provide them a, a notice of violation, which is not necessarily a citation. It's just a heads up, hey, don't do this. Uh, but otherwise, Tom has a lot of pamphlets and material that we can always provide as education as well. And then we will have our, um, our contracted, uh, consultant for this is Charles Abbott. They have a team that will come out and provide education as well. And in some ways, they'll just do random audits as well. So for things like that, it's, it's super important to know. The best rule of thumb, and I'm, I'm not sure if you've seen this, and I used to, I used to think of paint. But the clear evidence of like chlorinated water that's being drained into the curb is you see the residues like white, almost like white chalk, like white paint. And that's just because of the heavy, heavy material of, of the chlorine. And so when you see that, that's usually a red flag, um, folks that are working on their cars. And then there's this oil residue that's seeping down the driveway. Those are concerns. Um, construction activity in someone's house, they're blowing it down, that, those are red flags. And again, it's not that you want to be sort of a narc, if you will, but you do want to be protective of our process because it's, you know, it's our, it's our ocean at the end of the day. So, and people can get cited.
Can I just follow up on the, um, on the pool drainage? I know some of our residents have, uh, pipes actually cut into the curb, right? When they put their pools in, they simply kind of drain your system into their curbs. So if we're concerned about dechlorinization and we're concerned about our residents actually doing this, right? Um, how would we know? You're talking about signs like white chalk or white paint, but that's kind of after the fact in a way, right? If we see that, then we know that water's already heading down to the ocean. So, I mean, what would be the process, excuse me, what would be the process if we did notice that there were residents that are draining pools?
Actively doing it, yeah.
Right. I mean, you know, how do we make them aware of what the requirements are for us, right? In order to make sure that anything that's flowing to the ocean is, you know, properly, in a sense, kind of neutralized, if that's the best word to use.
Yeah, once it's done, it's obviously an issue, but it's also likely that they'll do it again, or they may not know. Um, in, in most cases, it's just recommended that you contact us, the city. And in our Department Development Services, we have various team members that can provide that assistance, whether it's our code enforcement, neighborhood preservation team, public works that they're out here. Um, both crews are out here seven days a week. So we have team members that, if you have the opportunity to call, they'll answer and go out. And again, in most cases, it's education. And, and if it's egregious, then we get into the acts of like, okay, like this is really bad. So that's our public works team that will contact. Um, if it's really bad, we, you know, we have to go through our, our local, whether it's OCFA or whether it's PD, but it's, it's really more in line with our shop and we'll have our contracted consultant provide that, that level of enforcement. But in some cases, if it's an accident, right, it's a vehicle accident, things like that are circumstantial. But if it's a resident and it seems to be kind of a, hmm, this is a concern, we wouldn't want you to necessarily be in that position to have to tell them anything unless you have a relationship with that person. Hey, by the way, you may not know about this. But letting us know and letting us handle will be the best, uh, form of action. And there will be a slide where it has like contact information. There's also county contact.
Sure.
If you want to just separate it from the city, it would be a county rep response time, who knows? But ultimately, we do have different contacts and I'd be happy to email these contacts to you after the meeting.
Thanks. That'd be great.
I think with the pools too, um, it used to happen a lot more. I think with the cost of water now, people don't discharge. Uh, because everyone needs to drain their pool down, clean it, you know, acid wash, things like that. With the cost of water now, you're not draining that unless you have to.
Yeah.
Even the backwashing stuff, they're not doing it as much. But you're right. You see it. It's already after the fact.
Yeah. And I mean, we've got pools, we have spas and spas are a lot easier to drain.
That's true.
Usually they just have hose attachments.
You winterize it or something, yeah.
You just have hose attachments and I don't know that our residents know, right? If they're keeping up with their chlorinization, which they usually do.
Yeah.
Um, if they just decide that, you know, it's been a couple of years, it's probably time for us to take care of our spa, right? I don't know that they necessarily are thinking about the idea that, well, you know, there are processes to make sure that the water that we're releasing, right? Is in line with what we're supposed to do when it actually does head out to the ocean. So.
What, what is a city process for that? If you want to, is there a permit, I'm assuming?
To?
Drain your pool?
So I was gonna, I was gonna clarify here. It's not against to drain your pool into, um, the gutter as long as it's clean water, right? So as dechlorinate as possible. So there are filters that you can purchase to filter your water and then therefore you could drain it into the gutter. So again, um, it, like Irving said here, it, it's an education point of view. Again, you can drain it, but it just has to be filtered.
So what about a saltwater pool? Because I may have to drain my pool halfway.
Yeah.
Because I have a thing that's broken on the bottom and trying to, anybody here scuba dive? I need somebody who can scuba dive.
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a, that's an excellent question, Chair Quilty. Uh, we'd have to confirm, but remember, the water is going to the ocean.
Right.
Ocean's saltwater.
Yeah.
So as long as a saltwater pool.
There's pH levels.
Yeah, you know, I don't think you put chlorine in a saltwater pool. I'm not sure.
No, I think the, the machine, it, it, the process creates.
Produces it.
Yeah.
Produces chlorine, but it's not.
So again, you know, it's, it's, it's a chlorine, it's a chemical, right? And so again, um, if, if that's the case, again, I'm not familiar with pools and you probably have to have a filter to filter the chlorine out.
I'm sure I can measure too, the chlorine. Okay.
Yeah, they have kits that will have the filtration system, read pH levels, make sure that those are all up to standard.
NPDS is a, is, it's a big thing, right? And so what I want to add here is, uh, members of our, our neighborhood preservation, our planning, and our public works, we have to have a training on this annually, right? And so we are up to date on the, on the latest changes or anything like that. Um, it was a few years ago where you couldn't even wash your car.
Right. I remember that.
Now they relaxed it a little bit and they changed it to commercial washing, right, and stuff. So, you know, there's always changes and so, um, we get educated every year. So as members of development services and stuff, like Irving and I have to sit through this training every year. Okay? So, um, again, uh, you know, if you have any questions, contact, uh, I would contact either, um, neighborhood preservation or Tom, our, our, our planning division. And then if we have to send people out there, again, like Irving stated, we send out the neighborhood preservation or the public works team.
Can I go back to the presentation? Thank you. So how to prevent construction discharge, um, this is again for larger construction projects, but it would also apply if you're doing any sort of home improvement. But basically just putting, um, methods such as bags surrounding ditch sewer system. Um, anything that's in large amounts, that's going to be piles of dirt, debris, just having some sort of tarp or protective cover below and over it. And that's the requirement that we have internally as well with anything that we do. And if we ever observe, whether it's a third party, um, again, neighborhood preservations on the scene to report that and they'll do a stop, stop order. Um, this is sort of what I was referring to. You'll see like, kind of evidence of things that look ominous, whether it's oil discharge, whether it's, uh, you know, some sort of chemical acidic kind of debris left over, whether it's paint. But this is where, uh, to answer your question, you know, we, we used to refer to our public works as, as public works department, but it's really our development services department you can contact. Because in any instance, you have Tom that can assist, you have neighborhood preservation, public works, or you have, um, again, there's a twenty-four hour non-emergency water pollution hotline, which is really the county. Um, so there's different methods, but I'd be, like I said, I'd be happy to send you the different contacts that you may be able to, to reach out to. And then just as a general practice, what we operate in turn in the city is we have these systems where you have these covers that prevent large amounts of debris and then public works will clean them out quarterly or every other month, depending on seasons. Um, but these are really effective and they catch a lot of the leaves and then large amounts of trash that will collect over, over time. And then, um, even our street, streetwear, Sweden Corp of America, and even our trash hauler, they have restrictions and they have strict, strict guidelines that they have to follow. Perfect example is, you know, you have some of the curbs that have a little bit of a divot, right? The curb and gutter. And even as our, um, annual process years, we repair those. We try to replace those that are damaged because we don't want the water kind of just sitting there either. So things like that go a long way. And just remember, only rain down the storm drain. But that pretty much wraps up the presentation. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to, to answer.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing nobody here, I'll open and close oral communications. And we'll move on to the consent calendar, the approval of April twenty-third, planning commission minutes. Do you have a motion? Does anybody have any comments or changes? We have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Do we have items from development services director at the department?
Yes, yes we do. So again, uh, good evening Chair and members of the planning commission. It's, um, nice to be here today. Uh, I did promise I will stop in once or, once in a while. Uh, but, uh, before I kick it over, um, to Irving to kind of go over, I think we put some, um, flyers on there on some upcoming citywide events. I want to just state that I am aware of, I believe it's, uh, Vice Chair Hasty's, um, request for a listing of some vacant properties or vacant, um, sites.
Vacant C-rates.
Yeah, so I am working with a local commercial realtor. I should have that for the next month's meeting. Okay? So I just want to give you an update on that. Uh, but overall, um, I believe, uh, our city manager, Chet Simmons, was here to, uh, give an overview of the budget, the city's budget. And, um, the May council meeting, um, the budget was approved by our council for, um, our upcoming fiscal year. Um, but that's it for me. I'm going to kick it over to Irving to, uh, talk about our upcoming events.
Thanks, Ron. So again, uh, right in front of you have flyers for the more, uh, Ron, I would say, the events are around the corner, on the horizon. So the first one is summer concerts. Uh, and this is put on by the recreation, uh, recreation team here. And we have four concerts that are going to start off on Pine Street and then they eventually go into the parks as you're probably already familiar with, where they rotate from Orville Lewis to, I was drawing a blank, Little Cottonwood? What was the other one?
Little Cottonwood.
Uh, Little Cottonwood.
Yeah. So they'll rotate in and out, but the first four are on Pine Street. And the nice thing about the, this year's summer concerts is we're also collaborating with recreation to do a, a similar concept of Nights on Pine. And it's listed on the two events there, two event dates. And this is where we as a, as a department and as a division for economic development, we really want to encourage participation from some of our local restaurants and businesses, whether it's as a vendor booth, whether it's if they want to sell food, if they want to get their name out. Um, it, it's additionally, it's free marketing for them, it's free exposure. Um, but we recognize that in a lot of these events, we, we want to bring out people that may not even live in Los Alamos, that want to either have a following for some of these bands or they just really enjoy our events. And so it's a nice opportunity of exposure for those folks too that may not know some of the restaurants or businesses in town. So. First one's on June twelfth and I would encourage, uh, you all to bring your family, bring some lawn chairs, have a good time. It starts at six thirty and ends at eight o'clock. And again, the next four will then be in the parks. Third of July is right around the corner as well and that's, uh, hard to believe, but summer's here. And as you already well, well informed with this event, it draws a large crowd. So I would definitely encourage that if you're interested, that you arrive early. As a general, um, courtesy, we'd like to invite you as a commission to attend. And if there's any sort of parking arrangements that need to be provided, we can always consult with our recreation team. We'd be happy to, to invite you to join us. I did mention Nights on Pine and I'll just sort of highlight a little bit more on that. It's, it's going to start off as what you see two breakaway events in the summer. And then we'll have our own dedicated, uh, night, uh, starting in August through October. And if you've been or haven't, I should say if you haven't been, it, it's a very fun activity that we do with, um, activating Pine Street. And the greater goal is to really draw people there to make it feel like it's our downtown. And exciting news is that we do have some infrastructural improvements on, kind of in the works, behind the scenes that will dramatically change the way that Pine Street looks and it feels. And you want to make sure that these activities and events sort of change that behavior, really, and, and really encourage people to believe that that's where we want to, want people to hang out and dine and, and have a good time. So that's going to continue through end of summer into the fall, is our Nights on Pine. So at the next, uh, our next meeting, I'll make sure that we have our flyers for that event too. But that's it. Thank you.
I got one more item. Thank you Irving. Um, if you watch our last council meeting, we had a presentation from the I six oh five team. And so I encourage the commissioners and anyone watching from home to stay connected with the city via an e-newsletter, um, the city's website or our social media. The I six oh five project will impact the city of Los Alamos, right here on Cotella and the six oh five freeway. Um, it is an eighteen-month project that will kind of re, um, imagine that area, right? In terms of the egress and ingress of the freeway entrance over here, like I said, six oh five in Cotella. And, um, there will be some closures of the freeway entrance and detours, et cetera. So again, um, I encourage everyone that utilizes that s- s- street or that freeway entrance to stay connected with the city for the latest up-to-date information on, um, construction time, um, street closure, uh, freeway closures, et cetera. All right? So that project is going to begin in June, right? So we're right around the corner. You won't see like closures right away. They're going to be doing some surveying and some, um, um, concrete work and everything. But again, stay connected because, um, we made it very clear to the I six oh five team that, uh, we need advance notice whenever there's a closure so we can do our assistance with them. They're doing great assistance as well. I think they have a, um, Zoom or a Teams meeting, a webinar coming up to explain the project. I think it's, um, actually it was today. Yeah, it was today. Yeah, it's actually today.
Probably right now.
Yeah, but I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's being recorded. Yeah.
And I attended it, so I can talk a little bit about it in mine.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Excellent. But again, for those watching at home, please stay connected with the city because it will, it's an eighteen-month project and it will impact our city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a dedicated, uh, area in the city of Los Al web page? Or do we simply go, do we simply go to the city of Los Al website?
It'll be, it'll be listed on our city website and then it'll direct folks to their landing page. We'll have the entire breakdown. Um, I'll make sure, I'll forward their information that you can follow their website, their social media page, contacting emails. But yeah, we want to make sure that we have folks go to our website to, where we have all of our projects in the city. And then from there, it'll just take them directly to that link.
Thanks very much.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner Report.
Oh, great. Okay. So, um, I'll just go in chronological order. Um, I attended the Arbor Day celebration and although the weather was pretty rainy, it was actually a lot of fun. Didn't have a great turnout at first because of the rain. Um, but the staff did an amazing job. There were lots of great activities. The vendors were really excited to be there. Um, the mulch giveaway and seedling giveaway seemed to go well. I saw Irving there, um, as well. And then around eleven-thirty was the tree planting ceremony. And so the mayor was there and councilmen and lots of, um, representatives from the different sponsors. And, um, the weather, the, the clouds had parted by that time and it was a sunny day. And so it was a really fun event and it was really fun to see it really become much more of a family-friendly, almost a mini festival. So I encourage everyone to, um, to come next year. And hopefully the weather will cooperate a little bit more, but even if it didn't, it was really a lot of fun. And the rec staff and the development services staff did a great job with all that. Um, and then the neighborhood cleanup, I actually didn't have anything to, uh, uh, give to the neighborhood cleanup effort, but I did drive by on Cotella and was very pleased to see it was orderly, the, uh, traffic on Cotella was not impacted. There was staff there. It looked like the neighborhood was really taking advantage of that. So that was great. And then as I mentioned earlier, I attended the webinar, which was this evening for the, uh, six oh five project. And, um, they are really working hard with the public outreach. There's actually a way that you can text them and get text updates about the project. They presented a map. They answered a lot of questions. Um, and, uh, it sounds like they're really trying, going to try to make it as least disruptive as possible. And I was very pleased to learn that the Cotella and Willow avenues, those won't, won't totally be closed. There'll probably be some lane reductions, but they are going to keep those avenues open. The on-ramps and off-ramps will probably be closed. But based on what they presented with a new traffic signal, with widening lanes, with bike lanes and things, it really looks like once it's all done, it's really going to, um, help traffic flow here and keep things really safe. So, um, I did have a couple of questions in that regard. Um, the OCTA said that they're available for briefings and I'm wondering if the council is going to have them come and periodically present meetings or, um, if there are any plans, uh, for OCTA to come out periodically.
So, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so they were at our last council meeting to do the introductory briefing. And yes, as time permits, as we go down, the two dates that I know, uh, not two dates, but two incidents or issues that we're going to have is, uh, there's going to be two separate ten-day closures of the on-ramp and e-ramp, right? And so again, we don't know when that, because that's dependent on construction. But I'm hoping that they'll give us about four, six weeks in advance and then that's when we will invite them back to council to say, hey, three weeks from, four weeks from now, five, six weeks from now, whatever it is, um, we're going to have a, the ten-day closure. So again, it's, it's, it's part of the outreach plan. So yes.
Another question that they, uh, one of the participants asked was about the bike lanes because they are going to be installing bike lanes, but there really aren't bike lanes which are extended. And the OCTA mentioned something about the Los Al active transportation plan and plans to extend the bike lanes to Walnut as a feeder into kind of the downtown area, if you will. And I wanted to find out if there was any other information at this point that, uh, could be shared regarding that.
Um, so yes, uh, there will be an extension. So the six oh five freeway basically stops, um, before. So their 605 freeway basically stops before Epsom Way. And so, that when Caltrans, OCTA is doing their construction, they are connecting the bike lane that's coming from Long Beach Willow, the city will take over, right? And we're basically, it's not going to go on the street, we're actually going to bring it up onto the curb, onto the green belt, which is across the way, and put a bike lane with a pedestrian lane in there and then it'll take you down the Walnut, right? And so we're in design right now, there is some huge infrastructure that we have to design for that, removal of some trees and stuff. But don't worry, we will plant new trees as we remove trees. But this is all part of our complete street grant that we were awarded. It was a $5 million grant and so at the end of the day, that bike lane will not cost the city, you know, funds because we were awarded a $5 million grant to do that, okay?
I have an additional question. The Veterans Sundial, which is on Cotella and the green belt by City Hall.
Right here by City Hall.
Yeah, is that going to be impacted at all with any bike lanes or?
No, so everything will be on the opposite end.
Okay.
On the, on the other side of the street, nothing on the City Hall side.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to echo the Arbor Day. Went over, my wife wanted her mulch in the compost, she enjoyed that, so put it to good use. Last month, city manager came and updated us on a few things, which was, which was good, I appreciate that. Since you're here, Ron, do we have any updates on the Lexington Cerritos striping? I know he gave us the update what was going to happen after the city council talked, but timing wise, I think Lexington reverting and then the Cerritos corner.
So yeah, thank you for that, because it's two separate projects.
Correct.
So we got the Lexington one. I reached out to a vendor to a sandblast, I have not received a quote yet, so I'm still working on that. I'm trying to get that done within the next four to six weeks. Again, depending on the cost, right? Because we have procurement markers here, then, you know, they'll tell me, so, you know, if it's over a certain threshold, it's going to take me longer because I have to go through the whole procurement process of the city. But I'm hoping that it's not and if it's not going to hit that threshold, which is what we call an open market rate, I could probably get that done within four to six weeks.
Okay, yeah, that's good because that, and this is, you know, particular, but that Howard left turn, they did put a stop sign there now, which is interesting because now the cars, there's, there's a, there's a stop sign coming out of the base now and then a stop sign as you go another 200 feet at Howard and Lexington. But it's right now, since the striping, the cars are still there, it causes you to stop, everyone's looking at each other, you still can't see to go. So once that's done, I think it'll be fine. I think the, the council came up with the right solution there.
Yep, and then the other one, which is the Cerritos in the Los Al Boulevard, that one, flat out, it's problematic. We're, we, I've met two separate times with the traffic engineering team and we're trying to find an alternate. And what, 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 basically it's part of, again, I mentioned the complete street grant, revising that dramatically will affect our grant money, right, and stuff. So I'm trying to come up, working with the traffic team to come up with a solution that is approved by OCTA so we can maintain our grant money. So that one's going to be a little longer because like I said, I, we're running into some issues, but it is on our priority list and I'm trying to get that done hopefully in the summertime, so when school starts, yes. But I can't guarantee that because we're, like I said, we're running into some issues, okay?
Yep, sounds good. Last thing, real quick, and doesn't have to be this meeting because I think maybe Tom, but maybe next meeting, can we get an update of what's going on over at the Lamson project? I know that the, the product, the project or the property sold. We have a new owner and just curious to know if there's been any new requests for conditions or any kind of changes or, and then maybe an update of where they're at because I know they're still dealing with Sil Beach and Sora and all that stuff, just a quick update.
Yeah, we could provide that update. I could tell you there's no update, so.
Right, I mean, there is.
You want us to wait until we get an update? That might be better.
Sure, if you have something for next meeting, great, if not.
Yeah, so as of today, there's been no update. The only thing that I know is, what you just said, is they sold it to a company.
Yeah, Lennar.
Yeah.
Lennar, yeah.
Stuff, but in terms of them reaching out to change condition use or update with cities, I'm not aware of any of that stuff.
Okay.
Do you have anything?
Nope.
I went to the neighborhood cleanup day and donated some items and you know what, they did a great job. It was easy in, easy out, so I'm thankful for that. Really makes it nice to have that once a year. I think that's it, I'm interested to see what happens with the bike lane on Los Al and Cerritos because sometimes I see cars in it. Me and my husband have had many discussions, if you're allowed to be in that lane to turn.
To turn right.
To turn right, I don't know if anybody knows. So I'm interested to see what happens.
All I know is that once you come across that lane, you're supposed to treat it like it's essentially a pedestrian lane, so you need to look back, right? My daughter's just got their driver's licenses, so I know that they had to do this on the driving test. So other than that, I don't know that there's any other special considerations that need to be made. I think more of it has to do with just the way that the lanes are configured right now. But in terms of driving, you treat it simply as if you want to always make sure that when you're crossing over, you're supposed to signal, you're supposed to look back, right?
But you're not supposed to have your car in it, right?
Well, there is, if you notice, there's a brake, if I understand correctly, right? The car can move through the brake, but it's not supposed to go before, it's supposed to, if I understand.
I wondered.
I think the brake is to get into El Pollo, it's not to go in.
Not, yeah, not to drive to make a right, right?
If I understand though, the brake right there, it's, it's one where essentially you've caught yourself, boy, maybe this would be something better to have some clarity on. But it is one where, right, once again, the idea is that, right, as we all know, pedestrians, cyclists always have the right of way. There's something similar to this, I don't know if anyone notices, on Westminster Boulevard, as you're driving down towards Pacific Coast Highway, they have a bike lane that's set up similar to this at the brake, which I believe is Studebaker, right? There's a, there's another, right, there's a green marking there, right? And it's, it's the same setup. Now, once again, it's in terms of being a driver, right? You're supposed to come through that, but you're always supposed to check behind for cyclists. Now, in terms of what that does when you're around Los Al, right? It does create some real issues. So I don't know even if our citizens know exactly what the protocols are for that, so. But luckily it'll be gone soon, so.
Well, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what happens, I think it's giving everybody a headache.
I think it is too. And that's, once again, that might be something where, you know, anybody, given our timeframe, right? It might be a good idea to let our, to let everyone know what the actual rules are for that area, so.
I do want to piggyback because our neighborhood cleanup event was successful. We had over 400 cars, 417 vehicles actually.
Wow, wow, that's awesome.
Except for one, they told me, they were all Los Alamos residents, right? And so we collected, so we had a shred event there, so we had a little over, a little under two tons. So we saved, they saved 30 trees, right? We had e-waste there, so e-waste was another 1.3, 1.4 tons. And then we had 10 40-yard bins that equated to a little under 17 tons of trash debris that we hauled away. So it was a very successful event. We are internally right now working with our trash hauler to see if we can do a secondary event because it's so, you call, popular and stuff like that. So again, thank you for participating, thank you for coming by, again, okay?
Did you have any trouble with people trying to drop off hazardous waste at all?
Yeah, I was there, we had maybe a handful, like two or three, but that wasn't the only thing they were bringing. They had, they had other, well, our biggest challenge was people still like to walk up to the site. And even though our promotional materials indicate that it's a drive-through, yeah. So we just have to strengthen our outreach and communication to ensure that we have those limitations out there. But otherwise, yeah, I, I think the majority of the clamor was to have another one. And so it's definitely one that we're exploring to see if we can do one right before the holidays.
Well, I was going to bring it up because you brought it up in your report there that to drop off hazardous waste, I know I go to the Huntington Beach one and it's, it's very simple process.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't even get out of your car, they just take anything as long as you're within the limits.
Yeah.
So maybe a little advertisement of that along, at the same time, you probably won't get that hazardous stuff coming.
Thank you for that.
And I just have one item, I don't know if it needs to be agendized for next meeting, but to talk about possibly moving this meeting to 6:00 PM instead of 7:00, I don't know if everybody can make 6:00 PM. I can make it. Can you guys do?
It would be.
Then put it on, yeah, but.
But we can certainly do that.
Okay. I mean, would that be better for staff since you have to stay?
You want to vote, Gabby?
All right, you know.
I'm just teasing.
Yeah.
That's why it has to be agendized, yeah, I'm just teasing.
Okay, that's it, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.